Commission. Welcome to the fourth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Before we get started on the agenda, I just would like to make a statement. Our chairperson, Nancy Gonaban, has officially resigned from the commission. And I'll be acting as the acting chair for today's meeting until a new chair can be elected. And so it's with regret that I am the acting chair today. Commissioners, I see that we have some minutes for consideration.
Mr. Motion to approve the regular minutes of the thirty fifth, thirty seventh, and thirty ninth meetings. Executive session minutes of the thirty seventh and thirty ninth meetings as previously circulated.
Second.
Then move them seconded to approve the minutes. Also, what I motion is carried minutes are approved. Moving into the public hearing.
Adam, sure. Before we proceed to the next matter, let me just make the note for the record that I will be abstaining from approval of minutes due to the fact that I was not at those meetings.
Thank you. Your abstaining is noted for the record, Commissioner. Moving into the public hearings, calling agenda item number one, application number two-two dash two-four-one-nine-seven from eighty-eight Phoenix Inc. Mr. Nishio.
Afternoon, Chair members of the Commission. President Shu, on behalf of the applicant to my right is Raymond Zhang, last name Zheng Zhe. He is the Vice President and Director of the.
Have any corrections or any investigative report? It's all right.
Thank you, Madam Acting Chair and Commissioners. This application has received thirty-six written protests. That number represents one point two nine percent of the owners and lessees within five hundred feet of the proposed premises. And one point zero nine percent of the registered voters within five hundred feet of the proposed premises. Zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
That we have testifiers here today. Is there people in the audience wishing to testify? Do we have a list? Sorry.
It's still being filled out.
Okay. We can take testimony now. Why don't you come up for it?
So, Madam Chair, I will be swearing in the testifiers and I'm going to run a three-minute timer.
Mr. Rice is going to swear you in.
Okay, right. Do you swear that the testimony you give it stays here will be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I think.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, before you testify, excuse me, Chair, just to let everyone know, we did receive written protests today. So we haven't had the opportunity to read them all, but to the extent anyone wants to give oral testimony but also submitted written testimony, I would request you summarize your position or anything new other than a written position. And I don't want to assume that you did submit something in writing, but I just want to make sure it's not duplicative because we do have a lot of protests. Thank you.
My name is Denise Wathair. Aloha. As a longtime resident of the Governor Klaghorn, the building right next to the proposed bar, I understand how people who do not live in Waikiki may not realize that there is a thriving community of long-term residents, Maoka of Kuhio, in Waikiki's apartment precinct. Waikiki residents come from all over Oahu, all of the outer islands, most states, and many countries. We live with our families, children, roommates, partners, and on our own. We recognize and wave to each other on the street. We see our neighborhood children grow up. We may not live in single-family homes, but we do live in a residential neighborhood. No one purchased or rented in my building and the buildings around us expected to have a bar a stone's throw away. Two oh nine Ka'ulani used to be all apartments, but despite a well-known housing shortage, the new owners decided to make the first floor commercial. This past winter, the Department of Planning and Permitting shut down their illegal food truck that they squeezed into the small driveway at the back of their building, right up against my building's property line. Our apartments were filled with thick grilling smoke from the truck. We couldn't have fresh air because we were all forced to close our windows. Last month, their tenants with the THC store were raided by the police and narcotics enforcement for selling illegally high levels of drugs in edibles. That business attracted a lot of sketchy-looking customers to our street. And now these same owners want to open a bar right under our bedroom windows. Believe me, sound travels very well in Waikiki's night air. City people know that sirens, ambulances, and traffic go with the territory. But the fact that these owners are even proposing a bar next to residential buildings and below their own residential apartments shows that the owners do not care how any business on their property affects their neighbors. So how could we finally have them be good neighbors? They could get quiet tenants like a UPS store. Believe me, we need one of those. A barber shop. There was one that closed across the street, Makai of Kuhio. It was very popular. My husband went to it. People in my building. It's not there anymore. That would be a great tenant for them. A hair salon, a nail salon, a gelato or ice cream shop, a real estate agency of surfboard. But please, for the sake and safety of those of us who live next door and nearby, who have the right to a good night's sleep, we beg you to not allow them to put a bar right next to our pillows. Thank you.
Will give oral testimony. Agenda item number one. Online, that would like to testify.
The lobby that which is.
And the other testimony that were submitted via email or writing have been noted for the record and are being reviewed by Commissioners or are currently being reviewed. Mr. Nishio, any response to the protest?
First of all, we did try to reach out to the community. We did appear to the Neighborhood Board. We heard she thought actually appeared.
What day was that?
The last, I believe, Thursday, maybe two thirds of.
So that was, so, month of July?
Yes, correct. It's like, no one appeared.
Okay.
But we're on the agenda. You know, the problem with this woman's testifying seems to equate our applicant with the owner of the building. We are not the owners. They're not. It's just, it's trying to make a business there. And, you know, we looked at the objection and protest, and we are cognizant of that. And the whole concept here is actually for, to have a neighborhood bar. It's not for people to come out. The focus is the neighborhood. We don't keep, the owners, the applicants do not want, agree. There's enough places in Waikiki with loud music. And this is not one of them. You know, the nature of the building is such that it's pretty solid. It's old-style construction. So the noise does not travel very far within the building, but they're also aware of their duty to, you know, keep quiet in the neighborhood. And therefore, when they do construct, they're going to put in enough protection to make sure that the noise stays within. They're not playing amplified music. They're not playing live music. Basically, they just want to put some, maybe some background music and want it to be a place where the neighbors can actually come, enjoy some food, and drink, and conversation, and go home.
Mr. Nishio, but there is no outdoor seating area at this premise. So everything will be completely enclosed.
Everything will be completely inside, Chair.
Is it still under construction?
Correct.
You folks have a business plan by chance?
Basically, right now, we're, once we're approved, that we'll finish up the construction, we're just doing like a cafe-style bar. So basically, simply recording music where people can, in and out, like a restaurant. So it's not, it's just, we serve alcohol, that's the thing. So it's not a really big place, so people can run it, minimum cooking inside. So it shouldn't be noisy or, or like smoky or anything like that.
Okay, what's not before us is any description of the premises other than footprint and so forth. In my mind's eye, I can't even figure out what kind of concept you folks might be doing short of your descriptions, sir.
So basically, a lot of restaurants nowadays, to build a full kitchen requires a lot of money and to do a healthy form of the question, premises. So in their properties, very hard to do because it's very small. So we're doing more like a new-style cafe where you serve soups, salads, sandwiches, some maybe like fried food in the end there, you know, like noodles. More like, so not like a big meal, but you will have a big kitchen to produce that. And then we serve alcohol along with it. So people that basically finish work, have a drink, have a little food, that's the idea.
That sounds good, but hearing the woman who protested and reading some of these written protests, maybe there can be clarification to the Neighborhood Board in terms of what the actual concept would be, drawings. Use, because in my, my thinking is it would be useful, and for me as well, to make a decision on this. Is it a neighborhood bar? And what is a neighborhood bar? Are you attracting spring break crowd? That's very different. Are you attracting the people in the building next door? That's very different. So my thinking is to request that you folks provide us with some sort of plan, drawings, menu, things of that nature, to describe what the operations would be, what the premises would look like, the target audience, target customers. I'm just thinking aloud here.
Respond to Commissioner. Question, as far as providing a menu previously, because this is not a restaurant category. Necessary provider menu, but if you want us to do that.
Even cocktail menu, coffee menu, whatever cafe serves.
I would add to that, business hours, this class of license is permitted to be open until 2:00 AM. Is that your intent or is your intent to be open?
We will not open past twelve o'clock.
Pass what time, sorry?
Will not be, will not pass twelve o'clock. Maybe ten thirty to eleven is our projected time. After twelve, there's nobody around, so we don't want to say, make noises too far.
I think including that in the business plan would be helpful.
My comments are going to mimic, I'm sure, as well, be assured, be assured, I'd be much more open to making a better decision based off if there is a business plan, what idea you have in regards to food and things you're going to be providing, as well as, you know, the group you're going to be searching to come to your bar. But as well, I think, you know, in your, in the report, right, you listed your operating hours of twelve PM to ten PM, Monday through Saturday, closed on Sunday. I think if your plan is to be open later than ten, ten PM, you need to make sure you change that or rectify that in the report. Because, you know, obviously, right, as Mr. Buckley said, this license is open, can stay open until two. And I think a lot of people are really concerned about that type of interaction happening. Beyond that, I mean, I would feel much more comfortable if some way, shape, or form, you guys were able to figure out a way to get this information to the Neighborhood Board. Because maybe they didn't come, but it seems like there was quite a few of them that heard about the public hearing, made some ruckus about it. Maybe they didn't get to the Neighborhood Board, but that's going to be my comments.
Well, not, Commissioner, we received several protests prior to the first initial preliminary. So some, you know, somebody was passing out information throughout the community, which we believe.
On Acting Chair, before the Commission takes action, there is something I neglected to put on the record.
Go ahead, Mr. Rice.
Thank you. For the record, a summary of the June second preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Acting Chairman and Commissioner Buckley prior to the public hearing. I neglected to add that earlier.
Mr. Zhang, I see here that you have extensive experience as a server and manager of the Waikoloa Resort, Deep Palace Restaurant, which I'm familiar with, I mean, in Waimea, and then Panya Bistro as well. Yeah, so you're a local guy, yeah, with lots of experience in some nice places.
I've been in restaurants since high school, so.
It's evident, it's evident. Okay, so you do have experience and you do understand that you're going to be a good neighbor and how to manage places like this. So I, that makes me happy because sometimes we get applicants that don't have experience. But I'm hearing from Commissioners, you folks have been, would like to see maybe continue for a week and see a menu and a little bit of a broader business plan.
At least a week.
I would say just two weeks.
Two weeks.
I mean, one week is a little too short to provide all of these things for the Commission. Two weeks would be more prudent, I think, under the circumstances.
Okay.
I just have one more question. You said that you were still in the build-out. Realistically speaking, how long until you would open, even if the license were granted?
I don't know how long the constructions might take because we have the contractor to build out. When we apply, we actually, I drew a plan of how the inside would be like in the application. So it's not very hard to do, I don't think, but I can't give exact time. Because right now, our labor reserve, construction people is very hard to find right now. So I, that's a question mark to me, too, so I can give a definite time, right?
I would just comment that if, I don't want to needlessly continue this for too long a period, but if there's a period of time where they wouldn't be able to open anyway.
It sounds like they are still under construction, so two weeks wouldn't make much of a difference.
But perhaps even more so that they can reach out to the community and have a little bit more time to do that.
What, what, what's your, what's your flavor, Mr. Nishio?
Whatever is the Commission's.
Sure, sure. Buckley's comment, it might be useful, and it's, it's.
Over one month?
Yeah, and it's really Mr. Zhang, an opportunity for you to let your neighbors, prospective neighbors, know what your concept is. And maybe some of these protests goes away. I don't know. Maybe.
Can you four weeks public kept open?
If it's comfortable with that, all right with that, Mr. Zhang?
Probably not.
All right.
They're not in business anyway. I mean, there's not, there's no time.
And you never know, we should not need. That's a good way to get new customers.
Correctly. So my motion for agenda item number one, application two-two dash two-four-one-nine-seven will be to continue for four weeks, leaving the public hearing open.
A second.
Then move then seconded to continue agenda item number one for four weeks with the public hearing. There's open any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I motion is carried. Then item one is continued. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for coming in and testifying.
Yes, we appreciate it very much. Appreciate your time. Moving into special license application, calling agenda item number two, application number two-two dash two-four-nine-four-one from the Blessed Life LLC, DBA Blessed in High.
Yes, this is Sherry Yamaguchi, Y-A-M-A-G-U-C-H-I.
Hi, one more time, ma'am. We couldn't hear you.
Sherry Yamaguchi, Y-A-M-A-G-U-C-H-I.
Application is for a golf tournament, correct?
Right, I'm Mr. Yamaguchi. Mr. Yamaguchi, can you walk us through your event, please?
So we are doing a benefit golf tournament at Huakale on Thursday, August eleventh. It's more a corporate event. We'll have a hundred and forty-four players as well as volunteers or staff. It's starting at eleven in the morning, and then the liquor license would go till about five o'clock when we'd go into the banquet, and that would be by Huakale.
Have done this event in the past, correct?
This is our first annual. But Huakale does these tournaments quite often.
Questions, my motion will be to approve of issue number two-two dash two-four-nine-four-one.
Move then seconded to approve application number two-two dash two-four-nine-four-one. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I motion is carried. Application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number three, application number two-three dash zero-zero-zero-six-six from Hawaii Korean Chamber of Commerce, DBA Korean Festival.
Can I remove or not?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Russell Lu, R-U-S-S-E-L-L-O-U-K-E. Thank you, Acting Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioner.
Korean Festival, yes. All right, Mr. Lu, why don't you walk us through your event?
Sure, sure. This is the eighteenth annual Korean Festival. Last event was actually in two thousand nineteen, which we worked with Howard Hughes at the Victoria Ward. We were fortunate enough this year to get it back on city property at the Mopka. Unfortunately, Shirley Kelly Anderson wasn't able to attend this event. She wanted to come to this hearing also, but unfortunately she couldn't. But I'm working closely with her to present this twenty-twenty-two Korean Festival at Frank Fossey Civic Rounds. And of course, eighteenth annual, so we're hoping to, again, revive what was once captured with gathering and large events. So again, Soju and Beer Garden is one of our added attractions that we're looking at having also here. So this is the third year we're having this. We did it back in two thousand sixteen at the same site, two thousand nineteen at Howard Hughes, and then we're back here again.
You provided a floor plan. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So you're anticipating about ten thousand attendees?
Yeah, we're hoping, yeah, we're hoping. Again, with the new launch after this hiatus, after your hiatus, we're hoping we can attain at least ten to fifteen thousand. In the past, we had more. We had twenty-five, thirty, when we were doing it back at Kapalani Park and other events, you know, in the previous years, yeah.
Yeah, with, with the larger group, Mr. Lu, were there any issues, alcohol-related issues that could?
No, no. In the past, we never had any violations, any issues. In two thousand sixteen was the first year we had the Soju and Beer Tent or Beer Garden. Two thousand nineteen, I guess, the second year, and then this is the requested third year.
You've mentioned this a couple of times, but can you just confirm that the Soju and Beer Garden is the only area that you'll be serving alcohol?
That is correct. That's correct, sir.
Questions. So first question is, so is there a limited number of people you're going to be letting into the Beer Garden at one time? Or is it, I guess, how many people can fit inside there?
We're looking at a thirty-by-eighty tent, so we'll lay it out. And then we have, right, right now, the intent is to hire a prior vision security that we worked with back in two thousand nineteen. So we'll have a secured entrance that would definitely count, inspect the IDs, stamp them, as well as ban them. So they'll have two markings on, and then we'll rotate people out every two hours based on a different color band.
So you're going to have a two-hour limit inside the Soju and Beer Garden? Do you have a specific number you're looking at, if you're in that area? I just want all ten thousand people rushing in.
No, no, yeah, I understand, yeah. We want ten thousand active events, but yeah, I think we're looking at probably have like fifteen, sixteen in there. Again, with COVID and the requirements of that, we're going to have to look at isolating that. So I wouldn't think no more than forty, fifty, yeah.
The other question I have is another in the prior report that you had said that there was going to be urinals or restrooms within the Soju Beer Garden itself, but I didn't see them on the floor plan. I only seen them outside, outside of the tent, so I just was confirming.
The drawing is oversight missing, but yes, we want to make sure that they will have self-contained in within the area. So there's no, you know, people going in and out, right? So it'll minimize the activities ingress and egress also.
So one thing I would ask with that is if you could provide at least, you know, as soon as you can, an updated picture of where the restaurants would be, just so we have it on file.
Okay, I can do that.
And same with, I noticed food truck-wise, right, so food trucks are all outside of the Beer Gardeners. So basically, they're going to be in there for the two hours to drink, right? They're not going to be able to get food, come back.
Correct. That's right. Yeah, once you enter, pretty much you'll be there for the two hours. And then the bands will be cut apart there and be.
Based on that, my motion is going to be to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-zero-six-six with verbiage to provide updated sort of time with the restaurants inside.
A second.
The movement seconded to approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-zero-six-six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote, I motion is carried. Application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lu, and have a great event.
Yeah, thank you. Consume it up.
Calling agenda item number four, application number two-three dash zero-zero-one-one-five from University of Hawaii Alumni Association.
My name is Justin Muschino, J-U-S-T-I-N, Dr. Muschino, Y-O-S-H-I-N-O, on behalf of the New Age Alumni Association.
My name is Kyle Mitsumori, K-Y-L-E-M-I-T-S-U-M-O-R-I.
All right, gentlemen. Is this for a fundraiser, correct?
Yes.
Why don't you walk us through your event? Walk us through your event, where it's going to be, how many people you're expecting.
It's going to be on the grounds of eleven, ten, University Avenue. It's just the old Bar City Theater, if you're old enough to remember that.
Oh, yes, I guess.
The Bar City sort of building, and then we're taking the parking lot, and we're having a rally. The person is going to be a prep rally for the Universal Ice Football Team to kick off this season. We're trying to have the mayor there to give them a raw roast piece, get them all fired up and just former coach. We also kind of have Jimmy Chang and his entire coaching staff there to introduce the team to the public. And we also wanted to honor the volleyball, men's volleyball team for winning the national championship. And then Robin Amos, who, our women's volleyball team, will be there when our team. We also wanted to thank the, honor the tennis player who made it to the finals this year for the first time. He had somebody go that far, and also the women's basketball team for winning the mock and west. All the other teams that are available, if they're on campus, they're invited to come. The community event to raise awareness and to create good spirits for the upcoming season and wishing them well. Cheer them on.
And how much people are you folks starting to have in attendance?
We imagine eight hundred and a thousand people, right?
You compete, that's the world, you're going to lose some people.
I hope you guys have good food.
I'm serious, they're barbecue.
We could have the drawing, looks like you folks have a beer garden?
Yes.
And you folks have done this before, right?
We actually tried to do it last year, but because we couldn't get many fans into the stadium, so it was very limited, and we didn't want to take a chance, so we ended up trying to do it. But we did get.
Recollection, maybe it's another group did an event here, but maybe.
Recollection, maybe it's another group did an event here, but maybe.
Oh, it was, they had a bunch of that.
So some of my questions are gonna be similar to the ones that were previous to you folks. I know you're expecting eight hundred to a thousand people possibly. Is there a specific amount of number of people you're going to be allowing into the beer garden at one time? Do they stay in that whole time, or is there a limited time that they can be in there?
There's unlimited time if they want to stay in there, as long as they don't take their alcohol outside. That's why we have a barricade aluminum fencing around there. We have it also marked off. People that entered there will also get a wristband and the IDs checked. And we're not allowing alcohol outside that.
They're gonna be able to go in and out, but to go get food and go to the food trucks, that's the concept?
Or they, or they can, you know, put their food on a table and they go get food, come back and finish it.
Yeah, yeah. My motion will be to approve application number two three dash zero zero one one five.
Second.
The movement second is to approve application number two three dash zero zero one one five. Any objections? Hearing none, I also vote I, application is approved. Good luck, gentlemen. Go balls. Calling agenda item number five, application number two three dash zero zero one one eight from the Boys and Girls Club of Hawaii.
Madam Chair, before proceeding with this matter, please let the record reflect that I must recuse myself from agenda item number five due to a potential conflict of interest.
That's so noted, Commissioner Buffy, thank you. B A N Y A R E T. Fabia Asaf, N A D I A, and then A S. Have English online, too. Put yourself online if you're appearing for this. I think you're new.
Hi, English Jones, I N G L I S H, last name Jones, J O N E S.
Thank you. This is for a fundraiser event?
Yes.
Alright, why don't you walk us through your event?
Okay, so this is the twenty-sixth year that we've had this event in beautiful Land of Kauhune and Ko'ina. And so we've had a hiatus the last couple of years, just like everyone else shared. So we're back this year. We're hoping for more tables. Right now, we're at forty-six tables. So we're hoping to reach about fifty, fifty-two by that, about little under five hundred, but some of the tables are eight, eight people. This event raises very critical funds for us, especially through the end of the year. So we budget through, we only charge twenty-five dollars per year for kids. And so a lot of our, the money that we rely on are these fundraisers. And so the people that attend most are usually our corporate sponsors, I think every single thing, you know, all of the different ones that that support the kids.
How many, how many people are you expecting in attendance?
So we've got fifty-four volunteers signed up, nineteen employees. So depending on how many tables we end up, I don't, I don't see it being more than five fifty.
I see here maximum in attendance would be about five hundred?
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, it just depends on if we can get those extra tables.
Why don't you let us, how alcohol going to be served? Are you folks having a beer garden? Are you gonna be serving it from a vendor tent?
Yeah, a vendor tent. So we have a group called, they're called the Dussellerats, now they're called themselves the Kapuna Dussellerats. And so they bring their favorite wines and they do tasting. So that it's pretty much like a tasting of wine. And then we have, who's our beer vendor this year? We have two additional vendors, one from Kula Rum, who will have their own ten by ten ten. And then you also have low coffee brewing companies who will also have their own ten by ten.
Okay, and how are you folks going to be verifying that patrons are old enough to drink?
So the people that come to this event, we know them all, and I would say that, you know, for the most part, they're, I don't wanna call them. It's the Mormon culture crowd. We have six kids that are gonna come and give little messages, like little messages to the guests when they come in, and then they leave. So it's just from the beginning part. So if we see that anyone is, looks, you know, under, what is it, the age thirty, we will, we will ID, and then we've got wristbands. But we don't anticipate, and on, when we send our invitation, we're basically saying, you know, under twenty-one, you have to let us know if you have somebody, you know, that's gonna be in that group. But again, you know, we've been through this event many, many times, and it's a much.
Are you next up? So when you say you'll be checking if you see anyone that looks younger.
Registration.
And so you'll be checking them at the registration, at the entrance?
Yes.
And what about at the actual bars that they'll be serving at? Are they going to be doing a double check? I would suggest that they do.
Yeah, we can do that. We can make sure that they do. Yeah, and when we send, again, when we send out our invitation, we're gonna talk about, you know, importance of alcohol consumption and that, you know, anyone under the age of twenty-one, you need to let us know.
Then my other concern was also over service. If you folks have a plan for getting people home safely.
Yes.
Sometimes, especially because we haven't had events like this in a few years.
Yeah.
People might not be, might not know as well how much they can drink, you know, and still be safe.
Yeah.
So you folks have a plan for that, getting people home?
Yeah, we do. So Lyft is who we're gonna use. So we'll have, like every year when we've done this before, I have, I pretty much assign two people to kind of make sure, you know, to see how everyone's doing. And because there's so much food, I mean, it's really a beautiful, and we have like all, you know, four seasons and, you know, Dylan is from TS Restaurants and his whole tents, and we're gonna have so much food that we're, you know, we're hoping that that food is gonna develop with a little bit of wine right there.
Do folks still monitor over consumption?
We really, we do.
Okay. And to add to that, we also cover blocks at the Four Seasons, that's within walking distance to the property.
Okay, great. A lot of our guests could manage with that.
Great, great, okay. Commissioners, any further questions or type of action?
The only question I had is, I know you said they will notify you in advance of how many children are going, if someone's gonna be under twenty-one attending, correct? I guess my question would be, is that possible at some point before the event, just to let the administrative staff know if there is a number of people that'll be under twenty-one?
So actually, I'm sending out an informational email to all of our sponsors next week, which will include the twenty-one and under wording. They will be checked in at registration, which is the first table. They'll see when they walk in, and they'll also get a wristband if they're under twenty-one.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's fine. Okay, so my motion will be to approve application number two three dash zero zero one one eight.
Movement second is to approve application number two three dash zero zero one one eight. I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, baby. Have a great event. Oh, thank you.
Thank you for doing this for the community.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate you all.
We appreciate the Boys and Girls Club and all the good work that you folks do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A thousand people, wow. We need to get to.
Six hundred dollars a ticket, you guys are gonna make a lot of money.
I hope so. Sell them all. Alright, can we get Commissioner Buffy back, please? Moving on to preliminary hearings, calling agenda item number six, application number two two dash two four four zero one from Home Slice Pizza LLC, BBA Jack's Wood Fired Pizza.
Hi, Michelle Smith, S M I T H. Can you hear me?
Sorry, we're reviewing your application.
So sorry.
I'm trying to figure out what face this is in Holly Eva.
It's by L and L and across from the Long's Drugstore.
Got it, okay. This the former Opal Thai?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
It's the exact space, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Alright, figured it out, see?
Yeah.
Okay, and you folks are gonna be doing a pizza restaurant?
So we, it's already an operating restaurant.
Okay, great. Any questions, type of action?
My motion will be to approve application number two two dash two four four zero one. Second.
The movement second is to approve application number two two dash two four four zero one. Any objections or reservations? I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number seven, application number two two dash two four six one one from Seven Eleven Hawaii.
With respect to agenda item number seven, counsel for the applicant has requested that the matter be be continued two weeks, please.
Get a motion, please.
My motion will be to continue application number two two dash two four six one one for two weeks.
The movement second is to continue agenda item seven for two weeks. I also vote I motion is carried. Agenda item seven is continued. Moving into the temporary license application, calling agenda item number eight, application number two two dash two four nine three six from Green Ocean Ventures LLC, BBA Boebart's Cafe and Espresso Bar.
To my right is the member manager, Roxanne Okazaki. She is president and councilwoman. We'll have to change this good as you.
There's a very small space, correct?
Correct.
So I wanna take a look at your floor plan. Where are you folks gonna be serving the alcohol from, the counter?
It's a larger space than six years ago.
Okay.
We moved, we moved down to about, it's like twelve hundred square feet. Now, before it was really tiny.
From the corner.
The same where the liquor store used to be?
Yes.
Ah, okay, okay, that is a bigger space here, correct?
There was a few tables outside in the past for the cafe. Before you moved, are you still gonna be doing that outside currently?
Yes.
They didn't drink outside. But as soon as, this is approved, we're gonna move for to extend the area. So currently, it's only. Yeah, so it's only inside, right? Only inside. And later, okay, I see, alright.
The tables outs are outside right now, but there's gonna be no alcohol served there?
They haven't been served, they don't call it.
Okay. Can I ask, any further questions or type of action?
Approve application number two two dash two four nine three six.
Second.
The movement second to approve application number two two dash two four nine three six. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, good luck to you. Calling agenda item number nine, request number two zero dash two one four five six from BSM Food and Spirits LLC, BBA Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill.
With respect to this agenda item, we also received a request from Kenneth Lu, app counsel for the request or requesting continuance of two weeks, please.
I don't need a motion for that, right?
No, it's just continued for two weeks.
Okay, no objections? Alright, agenda item nine has continued for two weeks. Other business, calling agenda item number ten, request number two three dash zero zero one seven four from Wayne Lucas Choir, Mr. Lu.
Yes. My right is Angela Choi. She's the general manager for the proposed licensee. Let her work and expect Wayne Lucas Council.
Yes, we have.
Yes, basically, when you apply for the license, you have a bakery on one side and Little Joe the other side. Little Joe's will not be ready until a little after. The bakery will be, our request is to just have the bakery site license. And then add on the Little Joe's what has been.
So you guys are gonna have these under the same license?
Yes, one like.
Two separate restaurants, so correct?
Two separate, yeah. And you say that the site is not completely done, but you're not gonna be using any of the seating or any of that stuff currently, correct? Like for any of the bakery things? No.
Including storage? Okay, we have our storage on the video. Commissioners, any other questions or type of action?
Questions, my motion will be to approve our request number two three dash zero zero one seven four.
Second.
The movement second is to approve request number two three dash zero zero one seven four. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I request is approved.
I'm asking for the acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in order for agenda items eleven and twelve.
The movement second is to approve the acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in order for agenda items eleven and twelve. I also vote I motion is carried. The acceptance of plea and adoption of decision and order are approved.
And motion. I mean, so back decision in order for agenda items thirteen through twenty-four exclusive.
The movement second is to adopt the finding of fact decision in order for agenda items thirteen through twenty-four exclusive, as previously circulated. I also vote I motion is carried, adoption of finding of fact decision in order are approved. Adjudications. Lieutenant singer.
Good afternoon. Thomas Snapsig, your deputy corporation counsel on behalf of the city of Honolulu.
Agenda item twenty-five, Pekaka LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Chelsea Madja appearing on behalf of the licensee, he Pekaka LLC, also in the room.
Madja, I'm sorry, can you folks turn up your volume or move closer to the mic? We can barely hear you.
Also seated in the room is Richard Pezzullo, last name spelled P E Z Z U L O.
Thank you, that's much better.
And that's the jury, can you read the two charges, please?
Third one, honor about July nineteen twenty eighteen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee conducted business outside of the class or category authorized by the commission and which constituted a violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-one point two subsection A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Charge two, honor about January twenty-four twenty seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to notify the commission in writing of any management and or operating agreement prior to such agreement taking effect in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash forty-one point four of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Thank you, Ms. Madja. How would your client wish to plead to charge one and charge two?
The licensee would like to enter a no contest plea with explanation.
And that's for both charges?
For both charges, yes.
Thank you. Motion to accept the no contest plea for charges one and two. Second.
The movement second is to accept the no contest pleas for agenda item twenty-five, charges one and two. I also vote either no contest pleas are accepted.
Mr. Messenger, what are your recommendations for both charges?
Charge one, it is a first-time violation with a five hundred dollar recommended fine. Charge two is also a first violation with a five hundred dollar recommended fine.
Back to charge one, what is the factual basis for the?
Licensee was operating as a wholesaler without being licensed, as such.
Madja, you can provide the explanation. Madja, you can provide the explanation now for either of both charges.
Oh, yes, so, at the outset, the licensee would like to apologize to the commission. This was an honest misunderstanding of the rules. Heipaka LLC contracted with Thomas Naylor LLC to basically cater their weddings and special events. As part of that arrangement, Thomas Naylor LLC would purchase liquor with Heipaka's license and Heipaka would invoice Thomas Naylor LLC for the liquor that was purchased. Since then, the licensee has taken action to rectify the situation. It has since had its management agreement administratively approved as of July twenty-sixth and no longer uses that arrangement where it invoices Thomas Naylor LLC for liquor that is purchased.
It's approved the recommended fine of five, one and five hundred dollars for charge two for agenda item twenty-five.
Then move the second and to approve the recommended fines of five hundred dollars for charge one and five hundred dollars for charge two for total one thousand dollars for agenda item twenty-five. I also vote I, motion is carried, the fight has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Madja.
Thank you.
We got agenda item twenty-six, Hilton Hawaiian Village.
Commissioners, I'll represent that I spoke with Hilton Hawaiian Village's attorney Avery Matro and she requested a three-week continuance for items twenty-six through twenty-nine. And we have no objections to that.
Right, can we just continue those agenda items without calling them, or do we need to go reach them?
I'm, I'm sorry, my preference is that at least the LCV numbers are identified.
I can make a motion to continue, but for the record, we are gonna continue agenda item thirty-six, LCV twenty-one dash zero-one-eight-zero.
Twenty-six.
I'm sorry, let me just call it by the LCV numbers then, sorry. In the following matters, LCV twenty-one dash zero-one-eight-zero. TV twenty-one dash zero-two-zero-five. TV twenty-one dash zero-three-five-nine. LCV twenty-one dash zero-four-two-seven, for three weeks. That's the best that we're right?
Thank you. And that brings us to agenda items thirty, we're calling agenda item thirty, the roll bar by Tamoras. Bakala.
All of my shared members of the commission, Emmanuel Zibakalam, here on behalf of the roll bar by Tamoras. We wait reading of the charges and enter the of not yet.
And so we'll set this for a contested matter, Mr. Zibakalam. The commission has certain rules and procedures for contested hearings. I'm not sure if you're aware of those?
Yes.
Okay, do you want me to go over them?
No, not necessarily.
And Mr. Zibakal, I'm sorry, Mr. Navziger, do you want me to go over those procedure?
No, that's not necessary, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we will, motion to continue agenda item thirty to the next available hearing date for contested hearing.
Second.
Then move the second and to continue agenda item thirty, to the next available hearing date for a contested hearing. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, the contested hearing will be held at the next available date. Thank you, Ms. Zibakala. Oh, sorry, it's the next one, too. Calling agenda item thirty-one, the roll paca apple.
Commissioners, I'll represent that I spoke with licensee Gavin Morita on this case and we will be dropping this charge.
Um. Is, uh, will it be treated as a withdrawal?
Yes.
Before we do any action on this, Mr. Navziger. I wanna make sure that we follow proper protocol in making that decision and could you walk me through either your actions or what you did with your office in terms of making a decision to withdraw the matter?
Certainly, so I contacted Mr. Morita to discuss the charge. He provided evidence which showed that he had emailed the employee listing in question to the commission before the date required. After that, I spoke with my supervising attorney, deputy corporation counsel, Calico Warrington, who approved the the transfer and we also notified Liquor Commission Administration.
Okay, that's good, I wanna make sure to the extent that the prosecution wishes to withdraw or dismiss charges, that it's above board and appropriate and there's a vetting process that you at least check with a supervising attorney.
Certainly, and I have a copy of the email if you guys would like to see it.
Yep, we'll take your representations and thank you for doing that. So.
Yes, I think you.
Motion to approve the request to withdraw agenda item thirty-one? My motion.
It's been moved in second and to approve the request to withdraw for agenda item thirty-one. Any objection? And I also vote I, agenda item thirty-one is withdrawn. Calling agenda item thirty-two, Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill.
Commissioners, I'll represent that I spoke with attorney Kenneth who earlier this week. He is requesting a continuance to the next available hearing. We have no objection.
Wanna start your video?
Go ahead and continue agenda item thirty-two to the next available hearing date, thank you.
We're calling agenda item thirty-three, Club Roxa.
Commissioner, it's good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioner Michael Green on behalf of the licensee. She was here earlier and I have actually had an opportunity to go over this, these various charges at length with Mrs. Mr. Navzinger and I think we've reached a settlement subject to the commission. Perhaps asking me some questions and give you reasons why we've agreed to the fines they've recommended and the dismissal of various charges. They've advised me they intend to dismiss. I don't know if you have copies in front of you of photographs of build-outs and interior changes that were made when mandates came out from the mayor regarding COVID viruses, but twenty-three thousand dollars worth of changes that were made, but you may have those in front of you, you may find that.
Hold on a second, we do not have those in front of us, but there is a, looks like a Ms. Nakamura also on the Zoom, is she attending for this matters?
Yeah, she's she's co-counsel, she's in my office right now, your honor, Mr. Chair.
We're gonna do this, we're gonna go procedurally, we'll just either have Mr. Navziger read the charge unless you wanna waive the reading and then we'll take your plea.
I'm happy to waive the reading.
Okay, so, do you wanna enter a plea of charges?
But sure, I just wanna get it on the record before we continue that this this was not an agreed upon settlement. We had informed Mr. Green that we would be dropping charge one and then he had agreed to plead no contest to charge two, there was no agreement to do so.
That's exactly right.
So there there was no settlement agreement, we did not agree to drop charge one in lieu of a no contest plea for charge two. We had simply informed Mr. Green that we were dropping charge one and he then decided to plead no contest to the second, but I just wanna make it clear that there was no settlement agreement here. And I had spoken with Mr. Green about this earlier this week as well.
That's absolutely true.
Yep, and he's agreed for the record. So before we move to charge two, do you wanna make a motion or some kind of request to withdraw charge one?
Yes, so we're requesting that charge one be withdrawn.
No objection to that.
Okay, I did not expect you to object to that, Mr. Green. But Mr. Navziger, as I mentioned in the last, or second to the last agenda item, I wanna make sure that your decision to withdraw is sound and above board. Walk us through the steps you took and if you confirmed your decision with a supervisor.
Certainly, I spoke with Mr. Green about this, he he spoke with his licensee and represented to me the facts of the situation. I then contacted my supervising attorney, deputy corporation counsel, Calico Warrington, who approved it and we also notified Liquor Commission Administration that we would be dropping this charge.
Thank you, so why don't I start with making a motion to approve the request to withdraw charge one of agenda in thirty-three?
Second.
Then move the second and to approve the request to withdraw charge one for agenda item thirty-three. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, charge one has been withdrawn.
Okay, I'm going to charge two, Mr. Green, I heard you say earlier that you would waive reading of the charge, do you wanna enter a plea for charge two?
I I do waive reading of that as well, I have, I provided counsel with a copy of the photographs regarding the changes and interior changes to be in compliance, but.
At this stage, we just wanna.
Go ahead, Tom.
Sorry, procedurally, we want you to enter a plea for charge two and then we.
No contest, no contest.
Let me get that approved and then you can provide your explanation.
Very well.
Accept the no contest plea for charge two of agenda item thirty-three.
Second.
Then move the second and to accept the no contest plea for charge two on agenda item thirty-three. I also vote I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Navziger, what is your recommendation for charge two?
Charge two, on March nineteen twenty twenty-one, licensee violated the COVID order by not maintaining social distancing and permitting employees to be unmasked. This is a first-time violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Okay, Mr. Green, you can go ahead and provide your comment or explanation on charge two?
Well, you know, I think it's fair and I just, you can imagine what the city was like because of COVID, these people were losing a fortune and it was hard to control the distancing and things like that, but it's a violation and it's valid and it violated the the emergency order and I think that the the recommended fine is the right fine.
For your candor, motion to approve the recommended sign of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty-three, charge number two.
Second.
Then move the second and to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty-three. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, the fine is approved. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item thirty-four, Club Roxa.
Again, Michael, I'm gonna be after licensee, good afternoon.
There's also Ms. Nakamura appearing on behalf of.
Yes, she's more important than I am, I I'm sorry, I didn't announce her first.
One, Mr. Navziger, read the charge, Mr. Green.
I waive the reading.
Sorry, did you wanna make a plea for, what's your plea for charge?
No contest, that's the that's the number thirty-four.
Yes.
Violation of emergency order number twenty twenty-one dash nine.
Yes, thank you, motion to accept the no contest plea for charge, I'm sorry, agenda item thirty-four.
Second and to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-four. I also vote I, motion is carried, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Navziger, what is your recommendation for this matter?
This violation occurred on September eleventh twenty twenty-one when licensee failed to comply with COVID orders by failing to enforce social distancing and masking requirements. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars. I'll also note for the commission that a twenty-four hour shutdown was affected as a result of this.
Mr. Green, any comment on this matter?
No, there was a twenty-four hour shutdown, I have no further comment.
Thank you, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty-four.
Second.
Then move the second and to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty-four. I also vote I, motion is carried, the fine is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item thirty-five, Club Roxa. Mr. Green, please.
Thank you, good afternoon to all. Attorney Nakamura is present along with myself, Michael Green, on behalf of the licensee. I waive the formal reading of the violation under thirty-five.
And how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept a plea for for that last agenda item?
Then move the second and to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-five. I also vote I, motion is carried, no contest plea is approved.
Mr. Navziger, what is your recommendation for this charge?
On August thirty-first twenty twenty-one, licensee failed to submit their employee listing. This is a second-time violation, the recommended fine is three hundred and fifty dollars. The first violation occurred on August thirty-first twenty seventeen, which resulted in a two hundred and fifty dollar fine.
Um, my only comment is I'm told and I'll be corrected if I'm wrong. This was one day late, but it was late, so I leave it up to counsel and and the commission as to what you wanna do with the fine.
Navziger, any comment on the representation of the timing of this mission?
I have no comment.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item thirty-five.
Then move the second and to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item thirty-five. I also vote I, motion is carried, fine has been approved. Calling agenda item thirty-six, Club Roxa.
Good afternoon again, counsel Nakamura is here along with myself, Michael Green, for Club Roxa. We waive the the formal reading of the charges and complaint.
Commissioners, I will represent that charge two in this case was dropped. However, it was another attorney that did it before I started with the commission, so I'm not quite sure what the reason was. I believe it was a lack of sufficient evidence. I'll also represent that this agenda item is the one that Mr. Green submitted photographs for of the renovations that they made. If you guys would like to see them, I have them in print, but I do not believe that he uploaded them to the Google Drive.
The photos for charge one?
Correct.
And when you said that charge two was dropped by another prosecutor? Withdraw charge two?
I am, yes.
You don't have personal knowledge of the circumstances?
I do not, there was a memo in the file requesting that it be dropped due to the lack of sufficient evidence.
No, I.
And we had, we had spoken with administration about this as well.
If you care, I can tell you what I am told. I I think it's accurate, but if you're interested, I can share with you the facts as will relate to me by my client.
No, you know, Mr. Green, that's okay, why don't we dispose of charge two, we can focus on charge one.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the request to withdraw charge two of agenda item thirty-six.
Then move the second and to approve the request to withdraw charge two for agenda item thirty-six. I also vote I, motion is carried, charge two has been withdrawn.
As to charge one, we plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge one of agenda item thirty-six.
Second.
Then move the second and to accept the no contest plea for charge one for agenda item thirty-six. I also vote I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Navziger, what is your recommendation for this charge?
This violation occurred on June twenty-seventh twenty twenty when licensee violated COVID orders by failing to enforce masking rules. This is also a first-time violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Green, you can provide an explanation, we don't have the photos, but Mr. Navziger is prepared to share them with us if you want us to look at them.
Well, you know, it's it's, it's a brutal business for these people and considering COVID and when people were finally allowed in, you know, you can only control so much and and, you know, there's, that's what the the law requires that she do and she wasn't able to do it accurately, adequately, so the fine is the fine and and we agree and she'll pay it if you agree to that amount.
Okay. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one of agenda item thirty-six.
Second.
Then move the second and to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty-six. I also vote I, motion is carried, the fine is approved. Thank you, Mr. Green, thank you, Ms. Nakamura.
Alright, everybody be well, thank you.
You too. Moving on to other business, calling agenda item thirty-seven, liquor administrator, any administrative matters, Mr. Ron?
I don't have anything to add to the report that I circulated earlier today by email.
And thank you for your always thorough report. Calling agenda item thirty-eight, Liquor Commission, the solution of committed interaction group. Have you?
I'm not of that group.
It's only me.
Yes, the one part of it is, I mean, I had my own things that I had reviewed and turned it in, but I don't have copies of prior chairs, changes, but I can report some of the things that I looked at and saw that were that we wanted to change.
Apparently, it it's difficult when there were two and now there are, there is one. Apparently, it it's difficult when there were two and now there are, it's one. And so we'll have to revisit this, as to how we want to handle moving forward with um, the search and hire of a permanent uh liquor control administrator.
Do we need to dissolve or does this dissolve the, okay? Let me make a motion to dissolve the permitted interaction group for the liquor administrator search.
And move them second and to dissolve the permitted interaction group. Um. I also vote I no objection, so the big has been dissolved. I'm seeing as there's no other business.